We have a lot going on. Uh, we had to change things because Nick's not here.
Yeah, that was fine. I was just kidding.
You want to help?
Who's talking first? That's all.
Um, Rich Strout will be so tall.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's tall.
He's good?
That's good. He's really tall. Oh my gosh. I don't think I'm used to having you over here, ready?
That's all right.
Good work.
Okay. Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May Village Board meeting. If you could please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are agendas on the back table. If you didn't get a chance to grab one, you can look at it back there. Um, I'm gonna start at the top of the agenda with the staff reports. Is there anything else for the Eltymont Fire Department?
So we're already up to seven calls today. Six of them were pump outs. One was a house fire. Um, yeah, nice way to start today. Um, check your sub pumps. Everybody's sub pumps that's had problems today has been failures, so unfortunately, check them. Check your basement tonight.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm gonna go to the Police Department. Chief, hello. I'm well, thanks.
Just something quick. Garage sale went good. It was one of our first years where we didn't have any auto accidents. People were...
Wow.
Um, other than that, the Police Department will be coming in. I'll have an officer coming in on the next four Fridays at 7:00 AM for the kids walking to school, so just so everyone's aware, you know, we're gonna have little kids walk through the elementary schools on Friday mornings at, I believe, 7:20 from R. C. Park to the school, so just so everyone's aware of that. So we're safe out there for the kids. And, uh, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you for doing that.
I appreciate you scheduling extra people for the garage sale. We always know we need extra hands, just in case, but...
Yeah, we have more of a sense.
Yeah, no, it worked out well. Thanks. Um, Chris, do you have anything for... Oh, there you are. Sorry, I lost you. For Public Works? And I should say happy birthday officially.
Oh, thank you.
We're sorry that you have to work on your birthday.
No problem. Uh, so next week we'll be doing street sweeping.
Okay.
Um, and more main flushing. That'll be the two big things.
And we put out nixels for those, or at least for the flushing?
The flushing, yes.
Yeah, okay, so people will know that?
Yep.
Anybody have questions?
No.
Nope? All right, thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, we are going to welcome back Rich, Rich Strout from Barton and La Judas. If you have been following some of our meetings, I guess, I think it's since last fall, maybe even last summer. I'm trying to think of the first time you were here. It's been a while. We've had like a series. We're talking about our Brandle Road wells. If you have read even in the paper, I think they've done something on it. There's been a manganese issue over the last couple of years. Um, I think we might be up to two or three years by now, but when we start, two years? Okay. And we did a whole testing program and our presentations have gone on what is gonna be the solution for the future. Because we've looked at new filters for that site. We've looked at an experimental, well, not experimental, it's a new chemical that would treat the water that works. However, just to recap, that chemical is not available to us now, not at the moment. We hope it could be. And then the other was the transmission line, emergency transmission line to connect to the town of Gilderlin, because we are one, if not the only municipality, I think in Albany County, not connected to another municipality in case of a water emergency. It's always been an issue. We've talked about it. So these are the three options. We were, you've done a lot of work on this and you're gonna give us the, I guess, the outcome of your research.
Well, you just said it all, so I'm...
Okay.
Um, so our last charge with the village was to create a preliminary engineering report, which looked at three alternatives in depth, in more depth. Uh, so as you recall, I mean, we were kind of focusing originally on whether or not potassium ferrite would work and how that compared to a more traditional treatment option. And then what we agreed to do is look at those two options in more depth and also look at what it would take to connect to the town of Gilderlin system and use that as a supplemental supply. So, you know, Carrie kind of laid that out very, or the mayor, I'm sorry, laid that out very well. Uh, so where we are right now is we've generated a preliminary engineering report. It's this kind of thick report that everybody has. Um, it meets New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation requirements, which there are a lot of, and that's why it's got all these appendices and everything. It's a lot of environmental work in here. But the real basic part of it is looking at what would it take to implement those three alternatives? What do we think a reasonable budget number is at this stage of the game, which is pretty early? Um, and then you can use this document to go pursue grant funding, and that's really our intent. So there's a deadline of May 30th to submit this document, which is our intent, right? So we've been working over the last few months to get this ready so that we can submit it in May. There's a few little cleanup things. There's some forms I need to finish off with the mayor. Um, so, um, later on in the agenda, you'll be asked to resolve whether you would like us to submit that application on your behalf. Uh, those cleanups will be made in here with those forms. Um, and we also would be looking to start Seeker in one of your agendas. Uh, so that would be a coordinated review process that requires us to reach out to interested involved agencies, fill out the, the environmental assessment form, which we begun part one of, um, and basically ask if anybody has any other information in that. And then down the road, after 30 days probably, uh, we would be looking then to do the next part of Seeker. So with all that, that's kind of the next steps, but what I wanted to do is just kind of go through the, the basics of the report. Um, if in the coming days you have other questions, uh, you can get ahold of me. I'll be happy to come back out. But, um, we did look at, these are all in your report, by the way, so, um, we looked at the three alternatives. One was the potassium ferrite alternative, which would really be, it would, it would require a small addition to your building, uh, putting in some filtration equipment, the chemical feed equipment. Bottom line is, we, we estimate that the capital cost, the budgetary cost of that would be $1.1 million. We did include escalators in this, uh, because it'll be a couple of years down the road. Uh, we based this on all of these cost estimates, to the extent we could, on prior bids, on quotes that we got from, from vendors. And we, you know, we wanna make sure that when you apply for money, there's gonna be enough there. So we, we expect that any of these would probably, and hope that any of these would come in a little bit less than this, but we don't want you to be up short of money when it comes time to actually build the project. So potassium ferrite, 1.1 million, but as the mayor said, the problem with that is the, that the, the company that, um, that basically created this chemical blend has not been able to commercialize it and get it approved for drinking water as yet. So that could be a solution that you want to implement sometime down the road when that happens. Uh, the more traditional treatment, the manganese green sand filtration, we estimate implementing that would be about $5.7 million budget. That would be, um, a larger building, larger filters, and having to deal with a backwash, which we talked about in the past, where you'd have to probably pump it down here into the, into the village sewer system. Uh, connecting to Gilderlin, um, that basically go, you'd have to go out to Route 158 along, uh, 146 out by Phillips Hardware. Connect in there, there's a couple of stream crossings along the way, uh, some highway crossings, so those kind of jack things up. And we're projecting a budget for that, and a pump station will be required to pump water into the village. Uh, budget about 4.7 million. Okay? So when we look at the, um, I know that's too small, so I'm not even gonna try. When we look at the life cycle, which is the other thing that we look at, it's, okay, that's how much you're gonna pay for it. You'll have debt service on that. What is it gonna cost you to operate and maintain these over the life of the, of the project? Um, they, they come out basically in a similar order. Uh, potassium ferrite, if it was viable right now, would be the most favorable by far. Green sand would be the least favorable, cost-wise, and connecting to Gilderlin, uh, you know, the second most favorable. But there's other benefits to connecting to Gilderlin, and it's, as, as the mayor said, the only municipality, really, that, that we're aware of that doesn't have some other interconnection like that. Um, right down that road in Voorisville, we're connected to Gilderlin, you know, as a backup. So there's some benefits, you know, if, if there's an emergency to having that situation. So essentially what we'd be looking at doing is, is, is building a pump station somewhere in the vicinity of the hardware store, um, making that connection, and then just running along the highway corridor until we get into the village and make that connection. Uh, we may be on one side of the street or the other. We haven't figured that part out yet. Uh, that'll come later. Uh, but more than likely, we'll be on the north side. It's kind of what we suspect. So, yeah, there's a lot more detail in there, and again, you can, you've got a lot on your agenda tonight, so I'm not gonna talk through all that, but, uh, that's it. Um, so we're, like I said, we're gonna be looking to go through Seeker. I think that's further down in the agenda. So I'll stick around for that if there's any questions, um, which would, you know, get that seeker, the, the process going. Um, and one of the reasons we're, we're jumping into that now is there are some grant programs that require you to have completed Seeker and ultimately will require that you have done a bond resolution as well to actually make application for the, for the funding. So that'll be something I think you're, you're gonna need to consider as well. There's one other thing I wanted to bring up that, um, I've been looking at in consideration and as we got into this, but before I, before I do that, is there any questions with what I kind of went over so far?
No, I think we'll have a discussion on it when you're done, just, you know.
Okay, so this, I don't know if any of you have seen this. I know the mayor has. This is a, um, kind of a tabulation of water use in the village, and back in 2004, um, it looks like we, we in the, you know, the DPW started kind of tracking how much water, looking at how much water you had, right? And that you were using and compared to your capacity, and how much you had to, I guess, dole out over time, right? Inside the village and, and outside the village. And bottom line is, as I was looking at this, I recognized that you're, you're pretty much at the capacity at this point. So you might wanna consider that. Um, we can take a look. I talked with Chris about this earlier today. Um, he and I are gonna look at this with Larry, but, um, you may wanna take a look at this in terms of policy, because even if you were to move at a pretty aggressive rate, this is a couple of years out. So just something to think about, okay?
Yeah, for sure. Um, I guess, you know, as a board, we have, you know, in order to go down and consider doing the Seeker and the resolutions and things like that, we have to make sure you're on board with a choice. So, you know, you see that potassium ferrite, although the best priced option is not available.
Not a feasible option right now.
Yeah, and we need this immediately. Uh, last year's drought was a really huge indication that we need to do something. And even though it's a couple of years out, we have to make a plan now, because it takes that long to get funding and to get everything in line, et cetera.
Honestly, it's something that we, as a village, have been talking about.
We have talked about it for years, because we know it's just for the future of the village. You really should have an emergency connection, no matter what's going on.
And Voorisville has it and other municipalities.
Everyone's connected to Gilderlin but their own village is, is true. I mean, they, they're connected to so many other places. Um, and we have, Rich and I met with, um, their water department and their engineer and Peter Barber as well, uh, just to start talking about this. We have more talks, you know, go back and forth with them on, because we wanna get them involved in this as well as far as, you know, even support, letters of support, and they have to do a few things. You know, we have to actually talk about the agreement.
Do you wanna talk about grants a little bit? So we did already apply for two.
Okay.
Uh, they are, um, congressionally directed, uh, spending. Uh, it used to be called Pork Barrel. Uh, so we applied for two of those.
And we did get support from all of our representatives, from the town to the federal. So, and they all wrote letters in support of this project.
Right, so those applications are in, that really depends on what happens with next year's budget, right? So they would be a request to be included in next, next year's budgeting. So, um, you know, we'll see how that all works out.
It's a two years out.
Right, we'll be submitting in May for the state revolving fund intended use plan. That would open up the potential for, um, you know, their market rate or subsidized financing, which is gonna be a loan, and also the WIA grant, um, and, you know, you get on the list and possibly we can, we can do some rural wa, or, not rural water, USDA grants. We're looking at USDA. Um, we're looking at, there's a WIA grant that is related to intermunicipal cooperation. So this would be a good potential fit there. Uh, so there's a number of grants that we'd be looking for, but this May date is pretty critical to get on the list, so you can actually then move forward with those applications.
And just, I think you said it earlier, but just so the public understands, this, um, study or re, you know, the whole study that was done through B&amp;L, we had to do that to apply for these grants. This is all necessary to be done. You have to be ahead of, actually, the grant, so we're in good shape getting that together. Bless you.
Yep.
Thank you, sorry.
And the Seeker will be done.
Yes, right, so this is the first step. Next month, hopefully, we'll be in a position to do the next step and, uh...
Okay.
So I guess my straw poll is, do you, are you good with, you know, pursuing the connection to Gilderlin, that we have been talking about for quite some time?
In the ecological sense.
It is actually our only choice, I think, at this time, because the other, it does, it may fix the manganese with a filter issue, but we still have an issue there.
Right.
And it's way, it's a lot more money. We're still not connected for any kind of emergencies, so, right. I mean, that's my opinion. Okay, so I think we're, we're all in agreement on that, just because we have like eight, I think, number eight and nine later on, we're on the agenda.
I'll stick around and...
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks so much for coming back. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna go, now I'm gonna go to public comment. Sorry about that, took a few minutes. If you have a, a topic to share with us, please come up to the microphone. You are never gonna reach that, Ms. Denne.
No, she isn't.
You can take it out of its holder.
Yeah, there she goes.
Pull it. No? Oh, John's coming. Oh, there you go.
It's not my first rodeo. Hi, everybody. We want to have you save May 18th. Very important day. That's our Eltymont Memorial Day Parade. It's only two weeks away, so I hope you're planning to be on the sidewalk cheering everybody on or on your porches. I hope that everybody, at least on the parade route, which will be the plain, the same traditional route we've had, over Lincoln, up western, down Maple, um, will get their flags out on their houses. It would look so nice when the flags are out, especially during the parade, to tell everybody we're glad that they're there and they're part of it. We have a lot of new surprises that you haven't seen before, so lots of additions this year. Get out there, 2 o'clock, May 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you can always throw candy. Kids love candy.
You can throw it to the trust, you can throw it to the trustees, too.
Okay, anybody else have something they wanna share with the board? Kate, do you have something?
What?
It's pouring.
Oh, geez.
Surprise, it's raining. Hello, oh, sorry, can you push the...
What the heck?
Some of us are as lucky as you.
All right, I have so much. I, Kate Preventure, Thatcher Drive, I, I don't have, I don't have anything to announce. I, I do have a question. I think I've brought up over various meetings over the years that comes out of the last discussion about water infrastructure, which is, I thought that I heard Rich saying something about there might be some things that we have to address in policy regarding our capacity. Um, and I just really wanna support the board in doing that. I've, I know that we have a policy about, um, checking capacity and there's a formula before we grant connections outside of the village. Um, but I just, I, I just wanna say it publicly, that it's really important to be paying attention to that. I know that you are, but I'm not sure the public knows how you're doing that.
Yeah, and I think just a little, I think you were probably around for this as well. A little background is we have this, you know, capacity chart that we really, they track. We try to follow for anything that comes on, and then we add new things such as Troy Miller's development in the village. We added that on, so we have those calculated. In 2013, we actually adopted the chart and the, you know, what, the information that was there, so we could look to do something like that with where we're at now or something similar. So I think that's what we can do. We'll try to get that ready for June or July.
Perfect, thank you. I mean, it's hard to imagine we need that when the rain coming down again and the way it's been the last few days, but...
But it helps our Public Works Department as well, so they can have a clear answer. So it's really good to have this chart, and it's always been helpful for them. So it's not like, it's, you know, it's based on numbers. It's math. So it's not opinion, or it's not that we don't wanna do something. It's just based on what we can do.
Yeah, I think that's important.
So I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, it is important. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to share something?
Well, I wasn't going to speak today, but I end up with things I wanna share and news I think of. Um, first, we're thrilled about this parade. Uh, Stork Eltymont will be participating. And I'd heard through Tressa that the candy was allowed this year, so I wanted to double check that, that's all. Um, as far as the water, we all know waters are lifeblood. Gotta have it. But I'm not sure if anybody's aware, but the Gilderlin Bike Plan has a connector plan for Gilderlin Center to Eltymont, and that is to run north of 146, but not along 146. So a water pipe corridor could also dovetail in with the Gilderlin Bike Plan, where if they call for a gravel path. And I would also ask that every connection, which of course is necessary and needed, be planned very, very carefully, because a water main is like an interstate highway exit. Intensive development follows that. And what makes Eltymont so special and unique is that we are a rural village out here, and we wouldn't want suburbs of Gilderlin becoming Eltymont. So please, let's look, look at that carefully. A couple, um, things, uh, news to share. Our kiosk groundbreaking will happen next month. Um, that's one part of our ARPA grant. The second part of our ARPA grant is the Labelle Trail Network Plan. We're meeting with them next week, and we'll be planning a public forum where everybody will be invited, and we hope to hear everybody's voice. And Gabriella Romero, our Congresswoman for our area, is going to be meeting with the public on May 17th at the library at 12:30 for meet and greet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else? I don't see anybody moving, so let me move on to the agenda. Um, and item number one, um, before I get to one, two, three, and four, I'm just gonna ask our Treasurer, Heather Kelly. Can you give us just a summary of these, because they're kind of related? We have a lot of transfers. I just want you to hear it from somebody who knows, knows it better than me.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, well, item one is our normal monthly abstract. Uh, two is to consider moving money from our appropriated fund balance to the line to pay for that final LED project payment. Um, and similar situation with three and four as well. What happened was these were funds that had come in in a previous fiscal year that were appropriated for this, but then when the budget was done for this year, it wasn't added in addition to that budget line. So the, the money has been sitting in the appropriated fund balance. So at this point, just for budget reasons, we have to move it from that to those lines to make sure that money is allocated to those payments.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's for all of those. And then, um, number five, um, is the amending of the budget. After the budget was approved last month, um, OSC did a review of tax cap numbers, and an error was made on ours that if we kept the budget as was, we would be over the tax cap by 500 and some dollars. Um, so in order to just make it so that we're not over the tax cap, because that was what we had stated, um, for the budget to be passed, we would move, we would increase the sales tax line, which we had already estimated on the low side, and then decrease the property sales tax line, $1,000. So overall, the numbers, the, uh, end number's the same. We're just gonna take from the sales tax and put that on to, um, the, from the property, property tax.
Okay.
Is everybody good with that? Yeah, no questions? Okay, so I'm gonna go back to item number one. Consider approval of the Treasurer's abstracts, number 22 and 23, and transfer of funds submitted. We've all had a chance to review the vouchers. Could I have a motion? Ooh, Sandra beat you that time. John, will you be second?
Sure.
Sure, all right. John is second, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item two is consider approval of a transfer from the general funds appropriated fund balance to line A5182.400 in the amount of $57,713.43 for the final LED project payment, per recommendation of Heather Kelly Treasurer. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
John, and second?
Second.
Uh, Sandra, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item three is consider approval of a transfer from the general funds appropriated fund balance to line A9730.600 in the amount of $9,037.80 for the LED bond principal, per recommendation of Heather Kelly Treasurer. Could I have a motion? Michelle, and second?
I'll second it.
You guys are tying constantly. I have to give that one to Sandra again. She just got in there. Come on, John, be quicker. Item number four is consider approval of a transfer from the general funds appropriated fund balance to line A9730.
We need roll call.
I apologize. Roll call, if I was trying to...
In favor.
Thank you.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor?
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Now I will go to item four. I'll slow it down. Consider approval of a transfer from the general funds appropriated fund balance to line 97, A9730.700 in the amount of $1,663 for the LED bond interest payment, per recommendations of Heather Kelly Treasurer. John and Michelle, and roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item five is consider approval of an amendment to the 20, 2025-26 village budget, increasing the Albany County Sales Tax Revenue Line, A1120, from $675,000 to $676,000, as well as reducing the property sales tax line, A1001, from 338,976 to 337,976, 38, sorry, to 37, per recommendation of Heather Kelly Treasurer. Do you have a motion? Oh, Michelle got that one, and Sandra, will you be second?
I will.
Okay. And roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Okay. Item six, uh, consider approving the addition of CS Arch to the Village of Eltymont's engineering list. Can I have a motion for that? Sandra, and second?
I'll second it.
Uh, John? Roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item seven is consider approving a proposal from CS Arch to provide support and investigative services and feasibility study for the Eltymont Fire Department. So Nick couldn't be here tonight, and he was gonna summarize and go over the details, but I've been with him. So we talked about this at our budget hearing, or one of our budget workshops, where we put some money aside to talk to CS Arch for different options. They had given us a couple, one option a couple of years ago, and we're asking them for a couple of different options to increase space for the fire department, and the agreement you had is just to work with them. It's not the cost of all the, um, of what they're gonna be doing, but it's the cost of work with them, their, their actual cost, you know, their, their work on it, not the things that they're gonna have to sub out for some testing and things like that. Um, and we've met with them two times, um, and we just got, this'll get the ball rolling. We have some funds from this budget on the line this year that we were gonna use for that, we talked about, and we set aside a, a small handful, I think $15,000, on next year's budget for this purpose. So it'll cover this proposal. Actually, this proposal and the work to be done, so this is just, this is the smaller amount to work with them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Michelle is first, and second?
I'll second it.
John is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Serapino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. So now I'm more, I'm going on to eight and nine, which have to do with, um, Rich Strout's presentation on our water choice here. So let me go to eight first. Um, it says you have a resolution in your packets, "But consider approving a resolution declaring the intent of the Village Board of Trustees to act as lead agency for the Village of Eltymont Water Supply Improvements Project. The mayor and the Villa, of the Village of Eltymont and the Board of Trustees, together with the village attorney and the village's technical consultant, Barton and La Judas, are hereby authorized to take all actions, serve all notices, and complete all documents required to..." to give the full force and effect to this determination. Could I have a motion for that? Sandra? And second?
I'll do it.
Michelle?
We're looking at each other.
We're looking at each other.
You're doing that, I'm thinking the pouring, I think I left a window open. Anyway, that's what I'm thinking right now. Can I have roll call, please?
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. So the next part that we discussed briefly at the beginning of the meeting was consider approval to authorize Barton and Le Judas to submit the EFC application by the May thirtieth deadline, subject to final approval by the Village Mayor after consultation by the Village Attorney and DPW Superintendent. We were talking about the, this is partially Seeker, right? It's like the beginning of Seeker. This is a type-one action. We are not making a determination right now, we will do that later and then go through each, this, but you've had a chance to review it, and, and it's been filled out, and does anybody have any questions on it, or, no? We good? Okay. So I don't think we need Mr. Stroud at this point in time, I think we got it. No questions right now. More to come, though, on the same part in June. Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
John is first?
I'll be second.
And Michelle is second? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. And I just want to ask, that, we're good with that now, for what we were, what we talked, just, okay?
That's all, so the only question I had is, Rich, you drafted that lead agency coordination letter and offer to get that out, is the, is the board okay to, to let Rich go ahead and say?
Yes.
Yep, perfect.
Yes. We are happy to do that.
It looked great, it had a really good summary of the project.
Okay, excellent. All right, excellent, thank you. Uh, we move on to, let me see, where was I?
Ten.
Ten, I'm sorry, I've been looking around here. Okay, consider approving a resolution adopting the Albany County 2025 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Just a little background on this hazard mitigation plan for those, I know I was involved in it, Larry Adams was involved in it, Patty Blackwood from the office. Albany County redoes this plan every so many years, and they meet with each municipality, and we talk about what could happen, you know, if there's a flood or hazards that we have, flooding or hurricanes and things like that, and how would you mitigate? And you also have some goals or things you want to do to help mitigate any of those issues. And when we first met with them, it was actually Barton and Le Judas, I think, did the study, if I recall, right? Yeah, yeah, your, your group was chosen by the county, and they had an associate come out and meet with us and talk to us quite a bit, and we went through every little part. And I, I was happy to see that the goals that Jeff Muller had set in the past for us, we had achieved all of them. And that was really awesome. And actually, there was one left, and that was the dredging, and we did that last summer, too, so it was right, all simultaneously. So all that information went back, it was all put together through Barton and Le Judas, it was presented to the county, everyone got to comment, so Knox, we actually worked with Knox on one part of it, because our reservoir is up there, and this is the final draft. So this is, we have to get this back to them so they can finalize it. So that's, that's what this is, that's a long explanation, but there you go. Could I have a motion to adopt that?
So moved.
All right, I'm gonna give Sandra first and John second, because that's just the way it went.
Sounds good.
And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item number eleven is consider approving amendment to AFLAC to allow trans-elite universal life insurance, participation is voluntary, and premiums are paid by our employees. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Michelle, and second?
Second.
And Sandra? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. Item twelve is consider approval of request for the village water for a single-family dwelling at 208 Main Street, Altamont, tax map thirty-seven point eighteen dash one dash two, per request of Kyle Turin. Capital charge for the new service connection to water is $2,500. Chris Arzemanian, Superintendent of Public Works, has reviewed the application and recommended the connection. So could I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, John is first, and second?
I'll second.
And Sandra is second? And roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. So there we go. Oh, yeah? Absolutely.
Just because of tonight's discussion.
Oh, sure. Oh, and I was gonna just make a note, too, but we'll see what you say first.
I am Rebecca Howd, attorney for Kyle Turin. When he purchased this property five years ago, it was subject to an old resolution from nineteen ninety-five for a sewer hookup, and it was represented that there was a water connection under the property. Long and short, turned out that the village codes had changed essentially. Am I right in that? I think that's the correct cause.
Yeah, the code has changed.
And so that, those representations were no longer valid. So for the last five years, my client has paid an engineer, done survey work, et cetera, et cetera, has put $5,000 with the village to pay for your engineers to review the plan, and we're finally at the final plan tonight. But I'm hearing this discussion about capacity. Now, he's within the village, but my concern is, he's already spent over $60,000 to get to this point. So his ability financially to go further in a speedy, you know, he can't tomorrow go do his hookups or that. What happens if, say, two years from now?
No, you are upset. You are, you're, he is in the village, and that house, as well as others, we're taking into consideration, you're on like our new list, like, we already know, but if somebody's in the village, they are, they are in the, what I want to say? They're in our numbers, because they have to be. So there's land that's not developed on Bozenkill Road, I'm gonna say that, so there's, but it's R20, and that development has always, always gonna come, but they're in the village, they are, they have a right to the water.
Well, my concern, too, is, would if codes, your village codes change again, and what, what's feasible today, or?
I, and I don't, and I don't remember if, I, I know Larry's, has told me about how the code changed, I don't know if it was our code, or if it's the code for how we're allowed to hook up water, Chris, I'm not sure if you know.
It was the village code.
I think it was the, the way that we had to hook up the service line, I think that's...
Yeah, it's, it's a different way.
It was gonna be a double hookup.
But as far as I know, I mean, my experience is, if, if it's in the village, and they pay taxes on the village property, they have their right to the village water. And in the sewer, in this case, because of the, the property. And I know that was, you know, that was a whole issue about the engineering to try to get, I know that was an issue, because there's easements involved, we don't have it where it was going, you know, it had to go a different way, but there shouldn't be an issue.
No, there shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, it, we can't not give you water when you're actually in the village.
Yeah, but can you understand why he's gun-shy about...
Understood, yeah.
That we're getting a resolution tonight, but what happens, you know, especially with all this discussion? And one quick one, because your engineer is here. We were wondering if we could get an itemization, whether that $5,000 is gonna cover all he owes.
So Heather Kelly, our Treasurer, does the escrows and keeps track of them, and most, I, I couldn't tell you what your balance is right now, because I, we don't know off the top of my head, but she does the closeout, and if there's a refund to come back, it comes back to...
Okay.
The person who put the money in there. I can't imagine you're gonna need more, because you've just been granted, you know, you did the engineering, we did the, all that, it's been approved, and that should close it out. So I think we're good. I mean, right, Heather, that's what we were just speaking? Okay.
Okay.
So it should be good.
I think I've, uh...
Yeah.
Have I addressed all your concerns?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We appreciate your patience through the process, but I know, it's, I know it's a long process.
It's been a long haul, five years.
It has. Well, we're glad you made it this, you know, you're getting there, getting to the finish line, so...
Thank you, but you can understand the capacity question.
Absolutely. No, 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 you're in the village, you're, you're good.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, oh, so, not on your agendas, because I had to add a 12.5 tonight, at about five o'clock tonight, I was talking to our engineer who is in charge of our Maple Avenue, Bozenkill Park sidewalk project, which is gonna start and, you know, hopefully be installed next summer. We were waiting on a federal authorization number, these federal grants, as you know, things are a little weird in Washington right now, as far as grants go, you know, so we had to wait, before they could do any work, we have to wait for this authorization number, which allows them to get paid. You know, us, us pay them, we get the money back. So there is an execution agreement that, again, I, I did email it to you, but it was too big to print out in time for tonight. I have shared it with our attorneys, and, so here's what I'm asking you to do. Consider authorizing Mayor Denne to sign the Architectural and Engineering Consultant Agreement with Barton and Le Judas for the Maple Avenue and Bozenkill Road sidewalk and safety improvements contingent upon approval from Village Council. So I will get their approval in a, you know, within a day, and we'll then execute the agreement.
Okay.
Just so that, let them review it, because they just, I didn't have it to them, okay? So can I get a motion for that, please? Sandra, and second?
I'll second it.
All right, John, and roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Denne.
In favor. I'm gonna go to item thirteen. Consider approval to sell the following surplus vehicles at fair market value, 2005 Ford Ranger, as is condition, and a 2006 Dodge Dakota, as is condition, per recommendation of Chris Arzemanian, Superintendent of Public Works. The Village of Altamont has the option to reject any offers. Could I have a motion? Michelle, and second?
Second.
And Sandra, and roll call, please.
Trustee Sarafino?
In favor.
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.